I'll call the order hour, work session of Wake County Board of Commissioners on March 29, two thousand and twenty at three o'clock PM. Begin with a roll call, vote of commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Pope.
President.
Commissioner Barnard.
President.
Commissioner Carter.
President.
And the chairman is present, Ed. I would like to introduce our new appointment to fill the vacancy of Congressman Carlos Neves. He's Commissioner Burris, longtime friend, known him for many, many years. Served in the city government. He's not been sworn in yet, but we ask you to sit up here so that everybody knows who he is. Too many folks don't know this man, so we're going to welcome him over. Thank you for being here. Okay, I'll ask Commissioner Carter if he'd do the verification and Commissioner Pope, please. That's all standing.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you, Lord, to this day. Thank you for your love and your mercy. We pray, Father, that whatever said or done here in this room today, it might be for the glory of you.
Yes.
And, Father, that it may be for the betterment of this community. Have mercy upon us, Lord. Use us for your glory. Especially, Lord, we pray that we might be in the center of your will. God have mercy upon us all, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in our prayers.
Welcome to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank Liz Meyer from Wake Cross County for being here. She's the Jennifer Herd out of our legal counsel today, and all of the rest of our special guests, citizens of Wake County, Wake Cross. Thank you all for coming. We'll get right into our guest speaker list. We'll start with Mr. Manter, you want to call him out or you'll be able to?
You can.
Ms. Connie Oliver, you'll come to the front and state your name, address for the record, and state your business. You've got five minutes. Can you do it all in five minutes?
No, cannot. But we're going to do our best. We're going to do our best. I'm going to share my time.
I'm just kidding.
I'm Connie Oliver, fifteen seventy-five Gorman Road in Wake Cross, Georgia. I am the founder and president of Wake Green Incorporated. And today I was going to come and invite you to our conference, but unfortunately, that conference was canceled because we didn't have enough people to respond. But I did want to take a very short time to tell you who we are. We're a local food coalition here in Wake Cross, Georgia. We've been designated as a Georgia Food Oasis by Georgia Organics. And we, basically, our mission is to, let me read it because I'm going to get it wrong. We are an organization committed to facilitating access to wholesome, locally-produced food to the people living in the region of southeast Georgia. And one of our initiatives, you might already have heard of, we do the local fair market out at the Heritage Center, and our partners for Heritage Center are here today. And we partner with other people to give away food at times. And basically, we want all of our citizens to have access to wholesome, healthful food. Now, one of our initiatives is a much broader goal that we are sharing with the Heritage Center. And so for that thing, I'm going to ask Clint, he's next on the agenda. And so I'm going to give y'all some information that I brought about Wake Green, and then I'm going to give up my remaining time to him, if that would be to your okay. Is it?
Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I'm Clint Bowden, live over on Ava Street, probably by Ava Street. I'm the chairman of trustees out of Heritage Center. And I apologize for looking like this, but I came straight from Swamp Park.
We won't hold that.
Appreciate that. I had emailed Scott some materials, I think you have a map, that says Augusta Avenue property on top of it. A green map, I hope you got it. Some time back, a comment was made that maybe we could come up with a way to do something with that property that sits across the road from the Heritage Center, Risa, and Southern Forest World. That might be a way to draw more people into that area, which would benefit, of course, Southern Forest World and Heritage Center. And the idea that I came up with was a park. People in that area have been asking for a park, so just give them a park. And with a little help from the city, this was the design that we came up with, Hot Air. I thought we had it to where we were about to start working on this park, and then the last city commission meeting, they kind of backed up and said, they would really like the county to lease that park from them for a dollar a year. And so we're back to square one. So what I'm asking for, if you guys will agree, I want to go ahead and tell you, I don't have the paperwork with me, but you can get it from Tanya Miller and the attorney. This name I forgot.
Rick Redd.
Rick Redd. They have it. Basically, a ninety-eight, that property was declared a surplus by the city of Wake Cross. They've been trying to get rid of it. One of their efforts, well-known, did not work. And so they're just sitting there with it, don't know what to do with it. I really believe we can turn that into a park with a nature trail. My original plan was Heritage Center would put in the nature trail. We'll do the work on that. If you look at that drawing, it has a little village, that's those are Seminole chickies. We would get those built. It could also double as outdoor classrooms, things like art classes and things that either the Heritage Center or Southern Forest World might run over there. There's a little square area there, that's a fenced plate area. My hope at the time that I came up with the idea was that the city would put in that little playground for mom and state of kids down there and let them play, that kind of thing. Put some picnic tables around there, shelters over on similar to what you see by the playground out at Lawrence Walker Park. And my thought was to get local businesses to pay for those. So we all kind of partnered together. Now, on the bottom side of that, where it says twelve point something acres, we really hope that Wake Green will take that and put in what is called a food forest. There is a park, seven acre, I believe, park in Plamen, that has been featured on Georgia Public Television and a lot of magazines and stuff. It's a food forest, and a food area where community citizens come in, do the work, and take the food home and eat it. And Wake Green is very interested in taking that bottom half of that and doing that on one side of the creek. On the other side of the creek, we have a park with the playgrounds, the picnic tables, and the nature trail, and a parking area, obviously, for the kids to use. And we're willing to do that, but we're going to have somebody here to sit here and counter-stick up and say, we're going to do it. I don't know if you guys could talk to the city. They're pretty seriously trying to get rid of that, so. I don't know what y'all thinking about it, but that's what I'm here for, is to ask you to consider helping us put that park. If you've got any questions. I know you're going to have to talk or so. We can't wait.
What's the extent, Clint, that you would want the county to give it up?
Honestly, the parking area and that playground. Now, it might be that we get a business to put the playground in and sponsor that. I don't know. Parking area, what I originally had in mind was just dirt parking area. You know, where you can pull in there, park, get out with your kids, go to the playground. Some people would want, have said, what would we do but, I don't know. I'm not an expert on parking lots. I don't really care. I know our volunteers can put in that nature trail and maintain it, put in Seminole chickies, do the historical signage on that. And I think both Southern Forest World and Heritage Center could make use of the place for like outdoor art classes and things like that. Camp Oscar is going to be held in that area this year. They could use this. School groups could use this for field trips and outdoor activities and stuff. A lot of possibilities there. By the way, that lake is not there anymore. Y'all know that. And I'm not asking to put that back.
I was a ten-year-old when that was a beautiful place.
I've seen pictures of it.
There, and that means there was a lake though, like five or six lakes.
Yeah. We got, at Heritage Center, we had pictures there this way this weekend, showing Boy Scouts holding like a jamboree there, and they showed the lake. And it was nice.
That was called Shout Lake.
It has a great history too.
So I don't know if you have any questions for me or Connie about the food forest idea as part of it. She has a lot of volunteers to help on her.
Is my guy able to talk about how the expense to the county would be? Is cleared, and what you talking about?
I really don't want y'all to, honestly, if I could dictate what happened, is y'all rent this for a dollar a year, or they just flat out give it to you. And you guys cleared an area for a parking. And maybe the fenced-in playground area, which is small, by the way. It's maybe the size of this one. I'm not talking about a big one. And then let other volunteers come in from the other organizations or like a partner, and do the rest of the work.
Are y'all going to continue to manage it?
Well, I think it would be a county or city park, wherever it's designated. But we would help maintain, like if there was a storm, I could get my volunteers to go back down to Nature Trail, clean it up, that kind of stuff.
Mr. Manager, you got any comment?
The only thing I can think of about, and it's got quite a few countries in that area, right? Where the parking lots can go. Are you trying to just end those out?
I was thinking that forward, that forward side, right by Augusta Avenue. There's small pines in there.
Okay.
Probably a big step there, probably stay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And there's some good hardwoods in there, and I don't, and I hope nobody comes out. I might, you know, leave them in there in a view class place. But yeah, that front side is a, maybe fifteen-year-old pines looks like twenty. I don't know. They're not very big, in the front side.
Clint, did you design this, or did y'all have someone?
I drew, I did rough drawings, and they took somebody over the city who made it look nice. And as far as finding people who might sponsor these picnic tables and various things, I mean, me and my guys were going to do the legwork on that, trying to find people who would be willing to pay for a picnic table with a nice, strong shelter over it and put the name of their business upon it, and donate it by. We're not asking y'all to do all the legwork. Just need somebody to kind of take charge of this thing, so they go to work. Mr. Manager, maybe we need to do a cost estimate for this, for the county to do that?
Yes, sir. That's what I was just thinking. I can give the staff, we can formulate some sort of cost estimate on what we need to be done. That's why I was asking about the treatments too, so. And get started on, at least give that assessment, and then the next meeting in two weeks, bring it back with our thoughts and estimates from there.
Now, there's possibility that there'd be some grass.
And what we want to do, we believe that there are, you know, on our part, we believe that there are branches that would be available. And that we want it to be sustainable, so that once we get it done, that we won't be wondering what's going to happen. We want it to be very sustainable. That's why we want to go in, leave it as natural as possible. Because we have, we do know that there are trees out there that are hundreds of years old and we need to untangle that, so.
I know years ago, DNR used to have quite a few grants that led to a recreational area, so we can look at those too. I'll give the regional commission a second.
I just suggest that, so he's on track for that. Probably did check on reliability issues also. It'll be leased by the city for dollars a year, something like that. County going to be liable for.
I think that's sort of the big hiccup that came up before. We're not going to charge, if we put this in and then we do art classes at Heritage Center, we normally do charge something for those art classes, because there's supplies and various other things. But we're not going to charge anybody to use this park. Now, we may do.
We'll secure the kids out there, don't we?
Yeah, yeah. So when it comes down to insurance, you know, I guess if we had an art camp at Heritage Center, and we walked across the road with the kids to do a session over there, then whatever insurance we're under in here is going to cover our class there. But if some mama shows up for her kids to play in the park, that's a different deal. I don't know. How that's all there. And that's beyond my.
That's something our legal counsel and manager.
I'm pretty sure it would have to be covered under our property liability insurance. We're leasing it. Well, that's one, I'd like to say that, and I think we could be a plus for it.
It was my whole area.
Yeah.
And you could clean up the trashy, or not trashy, maybe not so bad.
It's not as bad as it has been.
That's right. But we, you could clean up wooded area that needs to be attractive to the eye.
And this is not something that's going to be annoying to the neighbors either. It's just a simple little park, kind of like Monroe Park with a metal chair, yeah. Just a simple little park.
Well, we appreciate y'all's interest.
I thank you, sir. I thank you so much. Great idea. We'll do what we can, whatever we can, make that happen.
I appreciate it. And I'm willing to answer, Connie is willing to answer questions at any time.
Questions, yeah. They have good questions.
I'd just like for you to bring it back up, Nick.
Well, let's, that's, that's big debt here.
That's all we ask.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank y'all for coming. All that, Mr. Clint? Bowden, over at seat two. That was you, okay? Marla and Al. I'll see you sitting out there.
You see me sitting out there. I'm Marla, now, twelve oh-one Poet Street, Wake Cross, Georgia. Today we're here because I'd already went and talked to the city about the Historic Preservation Commission. The city had one back in ninety-two and ninety-three, they sort of dispersed it. They made two attempts at it, as a matter of fact. And I've been here twenty-seven years in Wake Cross. And throughout that time, I've had to learn the history, but we have an amazing history in the county and the city. Overall, it's just, it's absolutely amazing. And we don't take that for, I guess we take it for granted in most cases, but we don't take advantage of it. There's people all over the world that will come and just, just to see historic sites. They go on vacations, and that's all they do. But ultimately, our children don't know this. For instance, there's a lot of kids out there that have no idea that we had a baseball field that is connected to the Atlanta Braves. And that baseball field, now the kids play football in, it's Memorial Stadium. But I can't tell you how many children have had no idea of this. And what we want to do is bring historic preservation back. And like I said, I went to the city. I don't want it to be a commission just for the city. We'd like to connect and be city-county-wide, which is going to take your authorization and say, yeah, you're okay with it, to do that. It's not going to cost the county anything. Basically, we'd like the county to be the overseer and be the controlling factor over the commission. So any grant money that we would be able to get in contact with, that would be progressive for the county and the city, it would come here through the county, and would be dispersed at that point. We have only, in the county and city-wide, we have only eight registered historic sites. And there's hundreds out there. There's the tree that's sitting down over by the police department, city police department. There's, I know Danny has a list as well. But we've got volunteers, we've got many people who are interested. In the past year and a half, I've seen just an enormous amount of people who want to really participate and get out there and do stuff, and bring these historic sites up, so that we could even do touring maps, self-guided tour maps. They could travel throughout the county and city by those maps, and actually be able to just visit all the historic sites that we have. So ultimately, I just need to know if the county would be on board with partnering with the city to do a commission that would cover county-wide. And like I said, we've got the people there, they'll do the work. And they want to get this started, but we just want to be able to have this operation that we have the county behind us as well.
But if it's going to be a joint thing, it needs to be a joint, city.
Apartment, yeah, right. And I went to them before, since they actually had done it to begin with. I'd asked them for their blessings, and if that was something that they would consider, and they were for it, so that's why I'm here today. Okay? Any questions?
No questions.
What kind of response did you give from the city?
Well, they were all excited that it was going to come back around again, which I was kind of afraid that they were going to say no, because it had gotten deleted twice. But they were very positive about it.
So what would you envision the county commission doing?
Being more so the deciding factor in any decisions that may need to be made. That I've talked to Atlanta, and they told me that the best-case scenario is that either the county or the city would be the ultimate final say if there was a question that had to be answered or a vote otherwise, that the county would have the final say in it. And that any funding that was retrieved could go directly to the county instead of going to the county, to the city, and getting all dispersed from there. It could stop right at the county.
Well, why do you think the county should be the authorized government?
Dressed.
When I was involved on the commission twenty-something years ago, the historical society was in operation. There were homes on Brunel and Gilmore Street that would fit right in in Charleston or Savannah. Problem we saw then was that the city commission would not enforce codes. It allowed those big houses to be divided up into low-income apartments, and let it run down, and they never would do anything about it. Has that changed, or will they change that? Will they, will they be a needful partner? Or will everybody look to the county to get it all?
No, it's going to have to go through the city. When it's within the city limits, those codes are going to have to be changed. But it's not just on the level just for the historic preservation.
Are they to do what they need to do?
They are perceptive to it. The city manager, Tanya, I've spoken to her a couple of times. The realtors, I know that they just had a meeting, they call it the retreat. And they did have a couple of the realtors and the commission was there. I see it every day. I have my real estate license now, and it became very apparent to me that we have a major problem, not just in the city, but as the county, in some areas of the county that are just on that outskirts. But these are definite problems that we have with, and it all falls back onto the code department. So they are willing to talk, they have talked. I know, I think it was two weeks ago that they actually had their meeting. And we, as realtors, even agreed that when we're out showing a house, and we have, there's two, three cars, or even a single car, that's sitting in people's yards or on the side of roads, that we're forwarding that information. We're taking shots, pictures, and documenting addresses and stuff, and we're going to start forwarding that to the city. It's going to take numbers to just, the commission, the historic commission, the realtors, and, you know, it's hurting everybody. It's hurting realtors' incomes as well as the taxpayers. And they're, they're being pushed into that, so.
Even with downtown developments, far, we can't even get the city to enforce codes down there. That's why all the sods and the onins are falling down. I mean, they just won't do anything, so.
And I own property down there, and that's why I push it.
Your husband's on the downtown development part. It takes a group to hold, you've got a former city commissioner right here. I mean, it takes a group to push it.
Absolutely. And that's what we're here for.
And it doesn't need to be the county commission, not that I'm opposed to what you're talking about. But it's got to be somebody, it's got to be property owners, homeowners, real estate people, I mean, people in the community rather than a government.
And there is an interest there that I've never seen before. In twenty-seven years, I've never seen anybody interested in downtown, in any historic buildings that we have, in the housing, and this is the first. I mean, there's people that are truly interested and want to see the changes happen. And tracking it all, and I've, I've talked to the commission, I've talked to all the commissioners, you know, really and truly, the problem arises, when you trace it back, it goes right back to the codes department. So that department has to change, and that's why we want to enforce this.
That's right. They got to change it.
And it's going to take that.
Oh, really, they don't?
And it's going to take people to group together and really fight it. I hate to say that, but.
I think last time, they just gave up. Nothing would happen, and just gave up.
I'm hard-headed. I'm not going to give up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's it, though.
Do we have enough of people that's going to take some initiative in the city and get the cooperation in the city?
I do believe so, I really do. And I think it's more of the business owners and the property owners within the city that are compelled now, that see that their property values are hurting. And it's going to have to be a push to really get some people to kind of move off the chair and do some different things, that if we get, even with the realtors, if we can get the realtors out there, and they're knocking on the door, showing the pictures all the time, and saying, look, here it is. I can't do it completely for you, but here's part of it. So that's what we're up against. We don't want to stop there.
Well, I'd be, we need a committee of city and county.
Uh-huh. You tell, you just let me know what, how you guys feel about it.
We have a city and county land thing about.
Right, right.
So something to that.
And even that, even that could be more progressive.
They incorporated them, but I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, we talked about that that night too. They did talk about the land bank. And some of them, I think, feel that the land bank's kind of failed, but there again, it's all kind of tied into how they control those codes and what they do at that point in getting these properties taken care of, so.
I know there's some glad property being taken down now, do we think?
Right, right. But I feel like the Historic Preservation Commission is going to be a push to help with the entire group, because they're going to see that the citizens are interested in it. They're going to see that they can't say no all the time, or hide behind the codes. They're failing. The codes are failing. That's all there is to it. So if you guys would be receptive to that, we'd like to do it as a county-wide, city and county combined.
The commission would be receptive to it.
Okay.
But we got, we got to have outside.
I understand. And if anything you need, then, Mr. Carter, you know how to get a warrant. You've got my information, I wrote it on there. If you need anything, I mean, I'll go back to, I told him I'd be back. I'll talk to you guys, so we're not going to, we're not going to let down on him.
You have a proposal in writing, so we'll know, nothing, just talk?
Okay. I'll go back and tell him that too.
I believe it, you know, I believe that all of us, really, want our community.
Absolutely.
Cleaned up.
Absolutely.
And not wanting to.
In all areas, in many areas, not just downtown.
Be proud of what we've got here.
Absolutely.
We've got a lot of history here, and we've got some of the best people in the world here.
The history's just amazing.
We just need to, we need to develop it, let people know.
We can get tourism money out of that too.
Absolutely.
And we need it across the county and city as well. Well, it's there.
You'd be surprised if we.
There is a lot of grants available for that too. So it'll help in a lot of different ways with that too.
Thank you, Marla.
Thank you.
Thank you. While we own about seventy, this is sold to me. I'm just looking right here. Parks and Recreation Facilities are with me. We put two million dollars in the clause, penny that we've had since nineteen ninety. And the people of Wake Cross and Wake County voted it down. So that don't leave us much teeth to do anything with. The list of people goes back to the polls of November and reestates this penny. This, this list of. This, this list of projects was put, put together by both city and county governments. It wasn't put together by a where county government, nobody else had no say, so it was a joint. We do, we've always have since I've been on this commission for twelve, eleven years now. It's a joint thing, it ain't something that I throw together. It's the commission that works together and decides on projects that put up a beat, but I'm sure. Thank you for coming. All right. Mr. Danny Barnes. B twenty-nine crash site.
Yes, sir. Danny Barnes, now living on the eleventh fifth August Avenue. And I am here as the helicopter and light. And so we can put a flag up at that site. And bang, put signs to where people can, from out of town can visit these sites. Like Laura was saying, we have a lot of historical sites outside of the city that need to be preserved. And we've come up with a historical trail map that people can drive. And I, in my opinion, if you have a veterans monument or plaque or whatever, somewhere there should be a flag to honor the respect. And I think that we should have a flag and it should be lit up to people to pay our respect. Same thing with the bridge, we hear the flags here, there will be one monument, plaque on it. And I was told that that can't be lit because it would be a stretch. So it's. I, I talked to, I called the DOT about and asked them about it and they said, if you put a light and a flag, it would cause it to stretch. Well, I bet you ninety percent of the people don't even know there's a flag on that bridge.
Yeah, there's a plaque there, but it's not lit yet.
Right, but in my opinion, if there's a plaque with veterans who have been killed in wars, that there should be a flag.
I agree.
And a flag should be lit. That is what I, you know, came, pretty much came for here today. And, uh, markers, markers on the road showing, I know y'all have put signs of, out there at the crest, right? Showing that if there, it would be a sign along the road place and we're directing people to that like we did for the monument downtown. The DOT did put two, uh, road signs out directing them in the city, put the, uh, other, uh, road markers towards, going forward.
I know there's one at where you turn off. You go to the crest out of wood, so that's a bit.
There's only two signs that I know of, or the two, the one with the, like, on the other time, and then there's one at the hallway stop that kinda points that way.
That's right, oh, is it still there then? Is it still there?
That one is still there.
Washington Avenue.
Yes, sir. That one's still there and what y'all put up is still there. There's nothing on the main road, even.
I think they gave that about forty-five years ago.
Right, two thousand, when y'all put that one small sign.
So what you're asking us to pursue is a li- a lighting, a flag?
Well, if y'all can put the light up, we will, we will come up, somehow come up with a flag pole and a flag. If we could, I know that the pole right there close enough that you can, you can probably run off of that pole anyway. And then put the light or a light handle or some kind of everyone can, you know, have a light. And that, that's just my belief, that any, anytime, everywhere we travel, you know, like you always see markers, veteran markers and stuff, and they always got lights. And pla- and flags. And that site doesn't, and this will be seventy-three years this year, yes, sir. And I think you made a comment when y'all put this, that you need to respect and honor for that cause of it.
Yes, sir.
And I don't think we're doing it properly.
I remember, I was just a little tiny boy, but I remember my mom and dad talking about an airplane coming right over our house. We live at the end of airport out there.
Well, that was a big thing, that was a big thing that happened here because that plane crash kinda started off a lot of space secrets process that happens throughout United States now. So it happened right here. And we don't, in my opinion, we don't pay enough respect in signage to where visitors coming through would, could be able to get to it.
I'm wondering, Mr. Manager, whether they'd be some form of, uh, get that register that's a matching historical.
That, that is, that was gonna be one of the things we tried, if we can, like, once it had just happened.
That's what the question needs to be asked.
Yes, sir.
Is that to be, is that property privately owned?
The actual plane crash site, I believe, is going up somebody.
Used to be the site, it used to own it, but they sold it. Ma'am?
And she, Molly has spoken to him and we're trying to see if he would donate some property behind it, have it parking lot for people. You know, if we can put some.
Something we can, uh, Mr. Manager, we have something we can.
Well, I think. We discussed that being private property.
Right.
Excuse me, I was asking the county manager about who owned it, simply to understand, you know, what type of access there might be and or, you know, any privileges issues about, you know, putting money into private ownership. Now, if, if it was carved out and, and it was public ownership, that may be a different scenario. So I think we're just gonna require some legwork before we can give a real answer.
Right now, the marker sits, it's actually on county property.
Yes, it's on the very back side of the right of it.
Right.
But it's, it's, it's on, the, the monument itself is on county right of it, just right there. Some people will know that aside there. He said B twenty-nine, I believe it was, B twenty-nine, but, uh. It's something we'll check into. Let's, let's look at the historical society, do some investigating into that, see if they, if they may be some recognition and some evidence, something that's not.
Mr. Toll was.
You won't go to ask.
Mr. Toll was very receptive, so I feel like even if we had to, based on that, he would probably designate or donate a small portion.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a big. Well, if you get, get all that info to the manager, we'll be investigating it too. So if there's information, y'all got anything else to say?
So we can, we can put a light in there just like a streetlight.
Yeah, we can't do it on private.
No, no, no. Once for once, we get to.
Is it possible that we can put something on the bridge for, for it would be easier, I mean, easier for us to take the flag, another flag and place it? Say in the park where the monument is right now. Cause nobody can see that.
You gotta be just about right here to see it.
Yes. So I don't know if it's possible to put a flag or a light, I just wanted to bring the attention and see.
Hopefully the author will, will be, will agree, be agreeable with him, but there's a hate or get, well, really it'd be the author.
Right.
Yes, sir. Is there enough interest in the veterans that they would keep it clean?
I'm sure there are. If not, I would do it myself. I just think we need to pay.
Well, normally think, normally think.
Well, I mean, I would, I, I believe we should respect the veterans.
Yes, sir.
That's, I would be one of these.
Yes, sir. Appreciate them, yes, sir. All right, Mr. Kenneth O'Bear, Greenwich, on Cary James Road, Manor, Georgia.
I'm gonna take very much y'all's time. My name's Kenneth O'Bear. I live at seven two twelve Cary James Road, Manor, Georgia. Right now, the farmer right there, uh, on our dirt road, he's got all this plastic and drains that is decent, about as deep across the dirt road right now. I got a measure a foot and a half while ago. But, uh, the last time I seen him put pipes there were, I've been there thirty-one years and I seen him put pipes, uh, one pipe at a time. And they put them on, the road goes around a field and they put the pipes this way and this way and the lady that bought the land, probably ten years after that, she stuck a tree up in there so the water wouldn't run and cover the canal up. Yeah, so we, uh, but since the mortar boys started putting down plastic, you know, all that's just a, an alley of water. It's all, it just runs all my dirt out down there.
You can take care of that with our engineer.
They, they been, they been out, but that was the first January I hadn't earned no mors. But people think it's just wet when it rains, but when there water on that plastic, y'all see the water coming out there during the summertime.
It's like, it's like.
It's like it's raining all year round.
You got watershed on that, just like you got watershed on the ten acre park.
And then, and then like, you go around the road there, I, I say probably a half a mile all around, coming out of another field. The water this time coming right down the dirt road, right through the middle of the dirt road, you come around, across the pipe. I ain't never seen a pipe put there, but there's a pipe there. You can't see none of the pipes, stay there.
So the plastics catching the water and.
Like he got roads going this way, what does that dirt road, it follows that field around. And he's got roads going this way and then on this side, he's got roads going this way. When all the plastic is going this way, it's cutting up the dirt road. It just, uh, but they ditched it right to that. Well, there ain't no pipes there, but that lady saw that pipe up years ago. Sure Larry Davis did farm it. Then, then he didn't farm for a while and something, they planted corn, but corn ain't too bad, but when they start putting down plastic, it just, it just makes just aisles of water.
That's your culprit. That's your culprit.
Yeah, but where it's going across, they ain't no culprit was there, but where the corn, where the culprits were, they, can't you see the pipes? Yeah, that's all I'm asking, I mean.
That was the time to look at while it's like that, so our engineer.
Which they come out there, I, I don't know if they had time or whatever, but I was just trying to check out it again. I don't really like driving through, uh, that, that stuff coming off that plastic. You know, you got nitrogen going through there and fertilizer and, you know. But then where's it going? It's going, it's running out here in a creek somewhere. They built a house right, right there, where the pipe went through, where the canal, she covered up the canal, they hauled in about thirty, forty loads of dirt and built a house. But they, they didn't ever live in the house probably a year, but I mean, there's probably been twenty or thirty people that's living in there all the time.
Is this pipe, uh, is it supposed to be a drain pipe across the road?
Yes.
Did she put a tree in?
Yeah, that's been years ago, but like I said, it's, the plastic's been put down, it's just.
You said years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, I seen, I seen one pipe put down on that, that road in thirty-one years.
That's a violation of the law, stop, stop. Somebody, somebody was sleeping.
She covered up the canal too, but just like they're talking about how things get out of hand, you know, a lot of people won't say nothing. But like I, like I said, you know, it ran off good too, we got plastic, we had a plastic. It just, just makes the puddles of water.
I'll give my group a floor.
Thank you for coming. All right, Mr. Manager, out of A.
Okay, uh, under tab A is a homestead exemption audit presentation. We've got some representatives here from Lexis Nexis on the system and I'll just turn it over to, thank Joyce, with some of their crowd. I'll let her introduce the, the folks with.
Hello.
Yes.
This is Ms. Cheryl and this is Ms. Donnie. Um, I started looking at some of the homestead exemptions. I noticed there was something, something went right, you know, there was too many of y'all there. And took me about three months, in three months I did an audit and I went on there and I researched every name that was on this homestead. Or, yeah, a list of homesteads. And most of these people were dead. We had no idea. Uh, one died in twenty twelve, one died in twenty fourteen, two thousand and nine. With no spouses, so there shouldn't be no homestead exemption on there. But then that time, I looked at forty-five homestead people. That was a difference in taxes of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars for each exemption in the county where we grew from twenty twenty. So I talked to the Department of Revenue and asked them, who would they recommend for me to talk to because this is too much, I cannot do this by myself. And they recommended Gwinnett County, I talked to them and they recommended Lexis Nexis and it's like, hmm, it's a pretty good name. You know, they're the ones that do all the libraries and stuff, so I contacted them and talked to Ms. Donnie back and forth and then I got what's got and here we are. So I want them to do their thing.
Well, thank you, Joyce. Um, again, my name's Donnie, hi all guys. Can you Lexis Nexis this room?
If you'll come up to.
Oh. Um, my name's Donnie, hi all guys, and I'm out in the Dayton office, but we do have a home headquarters here in Alpharetta, Georgia, so we are a hometown uh, um, a Georgia company. So I have, also have my colleague Cheryl Carter, which is, um, Carter seems like a really popular name here. And he's been around for like sixty, seventies, sixty-seven years or so. You see, and then he came, he came to the county a couple, a couple of years back and, uh, Cheryl's been with our company for thirty-two years, so I think Carter has longevity, that's what I'm seeing. But, um, anyway, uh, getting back to the homestead, Joyce engaged me back in, um, at the end of November. And essentially what we did is we pulled the homestead file and we ran a test to see how many we could find. And we came to a conclusion and that's what we're kinda here to do, is to do the solution in how we, uh, came up with the audit and how many we found in a projected, our rate of return that we can bring back to the county that you, you know, once you hit, use through all the records, how much rejection we can actually bring back to the county. So we're here to help make the county some money, bring back some money. It's very easy. So as you know, the homestead exemption audit is, um, next slide please. Is, um, the agenda is basically we're gonna introduce the process, our statistics. Statistics, the exemption file, Cheryl's gonna be one of the exemption file, kinda giving us samples we pulled out to show exactly how we formulate the audit, um, some deceased examples, which are pretty easy, multiple homestead examples, and then I'm gonna do a rate of return at the end. Next slide, so, as you know, people are messy, um, they change, uh, they get married, they get divorced, they have four or five names. Uh, by the time you figure it out, is that the one same person or a different person? Well, as a, um, software vendor, we specialize in personal identifiable information, so we can tell the juniors and seniors and the people that might change their name like someone changes their socks. So one day I could go by Dottie, the next day I could be Dorothy, I could be Cheryl, or whatever name I wanna be called, but it's still on the same identity. We have a unique identifier that can identify all these folks into one, uh, identity. And so that kinda separates us from all the other people out there just trying to do information and bring information together. So we're really the experts in reliability and we have a ninety-nine point nine percent that we can match that name to that unique identifier. We use like a nine or ten digit code to identify that person. We never use a social security number because that's personal identifiable information. So some of the things that we have to do, we're restricted by some federal laws, we wouldn't put you in jeopardy as well. So some of the information, we have secure servers that we transpire this information back and forth. So the, the question is, is the information is very secure once we provide it for you. So people change, we get, um, they get married, they move and, um, you know, people lie, they, they're kinda waiting for the, um, Joyce to check up on them to see if they have two properties. They're gonna be waiting for Joyce to say, well, I think you bought this other house over here and you're talking about somebody living in Florida, so which is your primary residence? So they kinda like go back and forth and until you call them out on it, they're gonna continue getting that homestead because everyone kinda likes to have that money in their pocket versus giving it back to the county, would you agree? So that's kinda where we're at with the process and how the life events happen. Um, people are incarcerated, there's new people, um, you know, dying or people that die out of state that you might not have good records with. Um, they change their address, a lot of people go down to the post office and say, I'm moving from here to, uh, Ohio. But, you know, a lot of people don't do that anymore because they don't want that junk mail following them. So they don't go down to the post office and get all the junk mail, they just call the credit card companies or maybe your bank and that's probably the associations that they. or maybe your bank, and that's probably the associations that they change. So the information is kind of distorted, but we can find that good information for you. So, um, people, you know, like I said, they're messy, they have lots of names, they have, uh, multiple properties in other states, uh, in typos, missed characters, and, and names, and things of that nature. And, um, parcels change rapidly, I mean, it's, it's a moving target. You can't keep up with the parcels in all fifty states, much less your own county. So we have that information that we can provide with the, the scope and breadth that Joyce is needing. Um, so, you know, over fifty-two million people, uh, properties are bought and sold every day, or, over years, so that's kind of a big target to match as well. We have all that information that you can bounce off between the chief properties. Um, people, to date, um, there are unreported deaths, uh, multiple exemption claims, they put up with claims, and your family transfers, your estate planning, and all the different things that add up to, uh, kind of like, you're not real sure what's going on with that property. So we do have those good answers for you, and we can help Joyce identify those folks and, and move on. So next slide. So defining homestead fraud, um, I think I'm going to turn this over to Cheryl and let her continue with this, and Cheryl's one of the experts that we have.
Pretty wonderful. I use the term exemption fraud, uh, very carefully. I'm a certified fraud analyst, so I don't talk about fraud until it's actually, uh, identified and substantiated. But erroneous homesteads is a better, is a better term for me. Uh, it happens, it happens a lot. How does it happen? It's interesting how homestead, erroneous homestead exemptions may be made or get on a property. As Donnie mentioned, people are deceased. A lot of times they die out of state, you don't always have the opportunity to know nationwide where someone is passing, some, uh, where county resident goes to Indiana to live with a loved one or a child, and passes, and that loved one doesn't necessarily contact the assessor's office to change the property. Uh, there are data entry errors, happens all the time. I'm from Houston, Texas, uh, our, our, uh, tax assess, or our, I'm sorry, our, uh, homestead office is Har- is Harris County, um, about, what, four point two million properties, lots of data errors. Also, you have non-residents, you have people owning property here, but they have out-of-state driver's license, motor vehicles, they don't live here. Or they live here half the year, and they live somewhere else half the year. But as one of our Cook County assessors told us, you've got to choose where you live. You have to have one primary resident, and, um, quite frankly, we'll choose it for you. People have multiple homes, you can certainly have as many homes as you want, you can only have one homestead. Uh, rentals, we see rentals all the time. People own property, don't live in them, lease them out, maintain the homestead on. And certainly multiple exemptions, we see that a lot. Uh, I'm sure here, uh, you have agricultural exemptions, or, just say veterans exemptions, et cetera. Uh, we were looking specifically at homestead exemption and over sixty-five as well. So those are the stats that we have for you today. In terms of how we do our process, this little flow chart, starting at the top left, Joyce sent to us your tax roll. We took a look at it, L N, LexisNexis receives that roll. We actually did a data cleanse, not that your data was dirty, but just to correct the names and to, uh, standardize the names and addresses. Then we actually analyzed all of that data using our proprietary databases in order to find who's deceased, who has flags of out-of-state properties, who has driver's license outside of Georgia, et cetera. That data gets analyzed, that's where I, our team, the Special Investigations Unit, actually does its analysis, I have some analysis to share with you. We then, uh, above production, actually return that file back to the agency, that's kind of the lower left-hand side. We come in and actually help you review the data, we don't do the work for you. We actually just help you, um, do, help you, uh, in, in your workflow, uh, in, in actually establishing whatever process you have. I'm sure you have statutory letters that have to go out in timeframes, and protests, and that kind of thing. Uh, you do your research as necessary, of course you make a denial or a decision. And as Joyce pointed out, with the forty or so records she took a look at, there was a substantial recognition of erroneous homesteads that could be realized, or your recapture rate. All right, in terms of our proven results, uh, we've been at this for ten plus years, fifteen years or so, and, uh, on average, our counties are receiving between a one and three percent, uh, we see as invalid. The counties that are listed below, of course, Cook County, that's Chicago land area, uh, they did, they, a homestead audit with us a few years ago. They are still reaping the benefits, as you can imagine, uh, but at last count, they have recaptured twenty-seven, twenty-six point seven million. And of course, you know, as a recapture, that's how much is on the books that they actually, um, can recapture from erroneous homesteads. They have to get billed back that information. So in terms of collections, um, you're talking at least twenty million, but the recapture rate is about twenty-six point seven. Harris County, uh, that's my hometown, Houston, Texas, uh, they've been at it now a little less than two years, uh, but within eighteen months, their recapture was twenty-one million. And I must say, that was just from deceased, just the deceased. Uh, Fort Bend County is, uh, another large county next to Harris County or Houston, um, a little smaller county, about six, well, medium county, uh, about six hundred thousand, uh, no, I'm sorry, about three hundred thousand homesteads, uh, they recognize about two point three million. And then, of course, here in, uh, in Sarasota, Florida, seventy-five million, which is a big one. And then we have a couple of new, new slices there for you. All right, now this comes, this comes the fun part, actually. So this is what we took a look at. These are our analysis, this is an assessment. We took a look at three thousand, six hundred, three, three, six thousand, three hundred sixty-eight properties. We had to exclude two hundred and sixty-seven because they were either in trust or businesses or bank-owned property. On production, we can actually review those properties, but they have to be flagged a little bit differently and, uh, named a little differently. If it's in a trust, we actually need the beneficiary of the trust, not the name of the trust, because we're, we're looking for the person who lives in the property, not the name of the trust. All right, so out of six thousand, three hundred sixty-eight properties, we actually flagged five hundred and fifty. It's about an eight point six percent flag rate. But digging a little deeper, if you look at the table, we, out of that five fifty, two hundred and ninety-two are deceased. Now, that is one owner deceased, of course, there may be, uh, surviving spouses on that. What we saw in the record was either a single owner, or an owner of a property is deceased. Uh, we found a hundred and sixty in-county multiple homesteads. That means that your, where county resident owns two homesteads, both are showing with exemptions. Of course, that shouldn't be, there could be some reasons for that, divorces, maybe fifty percent on one or the other, but we, we found a hundred and sixty. The more interesting one to me is, uh, outside of deceased, is the out-of-county multiple homesteads. That means that a where-county resident receiving a homestead in this county is also receiving a homestead in another county, either in Georgia, or in, my goodness, in Texas. That's really hard for you to see, uh, but we see it a lot. So somebody has an out-of-state driver's license, or they have an out-of-state motor vehicle, out-of-state voter registration, or quite frankly, uh, even though they live here in where county, they haven't been seen at their address in over a year. And by in, seen, meaning that we can't establish their name to where county address. And then we also took a look at an over sixty-five category. Uh, these are people who, of course, um, are receiving an over sixty-five exemption, but our records show their date of birth as under sixty-five. Um, so we found about twenty-four, we probably could find a lot more, but, um, that's all, that's all we had based on either the, um, date of birth that was received to us, or the name was so unique that we could actually identify, uh, that they are under sixty, sixty-five, but on record, they're receiving an over sixty-five exemption. Now, I did take the liberty of making a slight change, um, to the presentation, I'll do that in a moment, if you go to the next screen. I wanted to, we wanted to give a little explanation of those records that we should not find, or that we have to exclude, at least in the assessment. That two hundred and sixty-seven records actually, uh, represents two hundred and fifty-nine parcels. Uh, they went to what we call an exception file, because as I mentioned, uh, the name, we weren't able to resolve, usually because it's in a trust, and we just don't see who the beneficiary is, so we have to get that information. Um, so we wanted to just bring that to your attention. Again, should this go, when this goes into production, we do reconcile that. Any questions? All right, um. At this point, I did kind of take the liberty to make a little bit of a change, with all due respect. We have six examples to show you, but in my better judgment, I have pulled those examples from the presentation simply because it contains too much PII. And with respect of your audience, I, I just think it's better to show you that, um, in private. So we do, we will certainly give you.
We want to see it.
Uh, an electronic version, but I would be more than happy to speak to these wonderful examples, because it is, it is entertaining. You don't know, I'm just pulling this out, and I'll speak to them. So a couple of examples of deceased. So we have a, um, a situation of individual living in Waycross, uh, has been receiving a homestead and over sixty-five exemption, still is. But our records show that he was deceased in April of twenty-ten. It looks like two other people are, are residing in that property. Uh, they could be relatives, we don't know. But we do know, uh, that there is someone who, on record, is still receiving a homestead and an over sixty-five, but our records show that he has been deceased since twenty-ten, and our proof record is, um, death records. So our online tool does have, um, death records, uh, social security death records. And of course, they're not certified copies, you have to get those, of course, but, um, that's the power of the public record. Um, as you know, you can do, um, web searches for obituaries. Uh, I do archive searches as well, I just wasn't able to find this one, pretty common name, um, but that's one example. And then we, or also, proof example, we are able to go into our accurate dot com system and pull, um, property records from twenty-nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, even further back. And on your website, in the Q, Qpublic dot net, it still shows in that individual's name with the homesteads and over sixty-five. Some of these have been corrected, but at a point in time when this was actually done, this is what we found. So that's one example. Another example, um, a woman, homestead and over sixty-five, uh, deceased twenty-sixteen. In fact, it was she and her husband, but her husband pre-deceased her. So husband and wife, he died, her name, of course, was on the property of surviving spouse. She died in twenty-sixteen, but nothing has been changed on that as well. Uh, in this instance, we, again, we were able to go to the Qpublic dot net, um, the exemptions were still holding. When we look at the property records from twenty-nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, the homesteads are still showing, and, um, we have the proof of our searches showing both are deceased. When it comes to the multiple exemptions, this one, multiple in-county exemptions, this one gets complicated, because sometimes there's divorces, and you don't know who, which spouse is owning the property, um, et cetera. But in this case, uh, this young woman, uh, owns a property with a homestead. She also owns another property in Waycross with another individual. Uh, but her license and driver's, or driver's license and vehicle are registered at the first address, but they are both showing current for both addresses. So... That's when you actually have to see, you need a diagram for that one. Uh, but we see that a lot. And again, it could be brother, sister, sister, sister owning properties. Uh, you know, one lives in the property, her sister's name is on it, the other sister lives in the other property, other sister's name is on it, but as I understand, you do want to correct those records and, um, make sure. We have undivided interests in Texas, so I'm not sure if we have fifty percent interest, or, or however. Uh, one that I did come to find out that you all certainly know who it is, um, property is in a trust, but it's in care of someone else, where that individual has two properties here in, uh, Waycross. I'm happy to say that that has been corrected, but at a point in time when we looked at it, it was very clear that there was, um, homestead exemptions on both properties. Both properties name in trust, trust name kind of changed a little bit to make it look a little different, but, um, multiple exemptions in the same county nonetheless. Uh, the last two examples for the erroneous exemptions have to do with out-of-county, and that one is, is a, is a lot more interesting, because it kind of speaks to the power of the public records in our service. So we have an individual with a Waycross, uh, property, uh, but he also owns property in Henry County, Alabama. He has both a Georgia and a Florida license, but he has a home in Alabama as well. Uh, his, he has a Georgia registered vehicle with an Alabama address. I'm not sure how, you know, I've seen P O boxes on motor vehicle registrations, which I think is unusual, but this one is a Georgia-registered motor vehicle with an Alabama address.
That's Ian Worgum.
That is in, yes, he has, he had, yes, he lived, he owns a property in where county. He also owns a property in Headland, Alabama, which is Henry County.
That's easy done.
Did you say too much already?
Yeah, no, no, that's easy done. I used to own vehicles, went all over the United States. And, uh, they were registered in Georgia to me, but their licensing was done in Illinois, and then they changed it to, uh, Harris County, Texas.
Okay.
Only comment on that, the Georgia state law says that if an individual owns property in Georgia, they can live in a, in a different state, they can have one vehicle registered in the state. That's, that's where you might.
One vehicle, so you can have more than one, but one vehicle.
Right, one vehicle, so you can have one vehicle in the state. In the state of Georgia, if you live in Alabama and you own property in Georgia, you can register a vehicle in Georgia. Just one.
Just one?
That state law, just.
So you can't, if you have two cars, you can't?
Just one, you're allowed to have one vehicle in the state. Because some people fly in, they're allowed to have one vehicle, that's it.
Is that per person or per family?
Per, I guess, per, uh, per pound.
So one has two cars and one.
One vehicle. Those, in the state of Georgia, if you're married, it's still considered one person. That's one individual, so one you. Yes, ma'am.
We learned something new today.
That's great, I love it. It might make a little more sense with the second one now. And the second one is um, owns property here in Ware County, also owns property with homestead in Jacksonville, Duval County. Now, his current driver's license is in Duval County, but it's probably that same situation.
Yeah, it's just a vehicle, not homestead. Correct. Not a homestead, just a vehicle.
You know, and sometimes we actually, to, to look at primary residency, we look at a vehicle or driver's license as a sort of a proof point. But in this case, I certainly understand the difference, but we do see two homesteads, one in Ware County, one in Jacksonville. Uh, there's a couple of examples which we, we certainly just speak to about the over sixty-five, and we mentioned we just found about twenty-four. But these are, these are situations where the single owner of the property here in Ware County has an over sixty-five and um, homestead, of course. There, we did not get the D O B on the input, but our records show she is born in nineteen sixty-one, and that clearly makes her ineligible for a homestead. You know, our over sixty-five, um, could she be the surviving spouse? Could be, we did not see a surviving spouse on the record. Uh, but that's one instance. We also saw another instance where the S S N and the date of birth were provided on input. Um, so, over sixty-five and homestead, but our records show a nineteen sixty-two date of birth, so that makes her even younger than me. Um, uh, so we, we see those, and we found about twenty-four of those. So again, we do have not only these examples that I just kind of spoke to, we have the um, the property shots of the uh, from, from the website, as well as from our sources. And what we got on input and output, we do have that, certainly Joyce has that, but for the privacy of our audience, we just chose not to show those examples, so, thank you.
Well, you said to us that we got property in Ware County that is fraudulently not being reported, actively not reported at all?
Our, we found, we found suspicious exemptions that are worth taking a look at.
That's what we want you to do.
Where the individual is, I, we either see the individual as deceased, only two homesteads, two properties with homesteads in Ware County, or two properties with homesteads, either in Ware County and outside of Ware County. And uh, if you don't mind, I will-
Sure.
-turn thousands of my time to tonight, because she has some of the online information.
You have any rough estimates?
Yes, she, she will show us that.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. We're bound by government laws to show PII information, so we didn't want to step on anybody's, uh, we didn't want to be called out here by the feds, because we have such great information that we just can't, you know, publicly display it. So I, we apologize, um. So, how the system works is, uh, obviously we ran your data, we did a test, and Cheryl has some result, some results that we walked through, walked through. And now, um, how do we follow up once you decide that you want to go with us? This is some of the support that we're going to give you, first of all, Cheryl. We have a team of S I U people, which Cheryl is one of them. She's our leader, so uh, basically it helps with the onboarding implementation. Um, your solution, so we take, I think, how, you know, if you want to do the sixty-five over sixty-five exemption, we'll help you do that. Um, specific instructions on investigations, we do like the best practices, how other counties approach this. So it's basically not a data dump, to Cheryl saying, here's the data, go at it. We come in and spend time with Cheryl, either over the phone or in person, or you do both, and we give her some good um, best practices, tips of how to approach that. And I think she has a very good handle on things already, um, just based on the fact that, so she has a good handle on how to approach it, because she's done a couple samples, um, talking to her today, she's done a couple samples. I think she did forty properties, and found, found maybe a couple thousand dollars for, um, you know, just working, just giving her ideas on how we approach this. So the collaboration with a customer is something that we pride ourselves with. We try to find out exactly what you're wanting to do, and uh, set up a workflow that's going to be very efficient, and make you, make your account a little bit more efficient, and obviously bring back more money. So um, we do a wellness check after we initially run the check, and this is like a three-year process. We're proposing to do this for the next three years with you. So we'll help, so what we can do is help uh, prevent the cost from, you know, being upfront, that you would have to pay a lot of money upfront, but you can spread it over three years, and obviously, once you get that revenue back in, it's not going to hurt anyone's wallet, so to speak. So the projection is, um, you know, obviously, we're going to save the county some money that, um, or bring back some money that we can uh, find these taxing identities that have been um, misappropriated, and obviously, update the documents and tax records and things, and tax values. So without raising, assessing values of the properties, which no one likes to hear about that, this is a way to bring back lots of money on the, on the county without raising the taxes. So if you're running for reelection, it's a great platform to have, to propose. Because I had one county afford that, and she's getting ready to learn, she goes, oh, this is an excellent platform, we run on. I'm like, you know, I was like, well, I'll try to help you out here. So um, sharing best practices and things of that nature. Since, since um, you're, you know, we would help with the executive summaries, and obviously, we, we said we'd come to the board and help present the information, and here we are. So I guess we're doing what we're saying we're doing. So here's the analysis that we came up with. We had um, six hundred and, six, six thousand three hundred and eighty-six homesteads, and out of the ones, two hundred and sixty-seven were excluded. So we found an eight-point-six percent flag rate, which was um, pretty high. We were kind of, kind of thinking, well, you know, obviously, eight-point-six was one of the higher ones we did. But we found some, maybe nine or ten, a couple years back in other counties, but eight-point-six was um, kind of considered high. So out of the um, false positive, I took two hundred and eighty-three that I worked with for a rate return, because some of them were going to be in transit, those types of things. So I took an even lower two-eighty-three, and calcu, did the calculation. So some of the experience that we've done, um, in other states, other counties, we've worked uh, probably twelve, fourteen counties, and Florida, Duval County is the closest one that I can think of here. Um, Indiana, we've done Elkhart, Indiana, Marion County, probably fourteen, fifteen counties in Indiana. Michigan, we've done the whole state of Michigan, Illinois, Cook County. Uh, South Carolina, we've done a ton of counties in South Carolina, and I think from Burfute, which is like Hilton Head. Um, Georgia, we've done one of, uh, Forsyth, and probably other four or five other counties. And then Texas, obviously, we've done a couple, um, in Texas, uh, Harris County, and a few other counties in Texas. So we've done, um, been doing this for probably ten, fifteen years. So if you want to know, we know exactly, can bring some back, some good revenue for your county. Um, we're not trying it out first time here, we've been doing it for quite, quite a few years. So the option, there are two different options I want to present for the cost. We can do thirty-six months, uh, the bottom line would be fifty, fifty K, and we'll spread that over thirty-six months, so it comes out to thirteen ninety a month. Or option two, which is we can take the twenty-six thousand records that you have, um, and we'll, um, well, this is part of option one. We'll take twenty-six thousand records, we'll double the amount, or triple the amount of the records that you run it three times a year, and obviously, clean it up three, three, four times a year. And then, we can give you like five, four or five users to help um, recall the information on the backend. And obviously, we're going to throw in the multi-phones and contact card, this is some of the things, but once you get into the service, you can look up relatives and have, uh, good phone numbers, like uh, s, mobile phone, phone numbers and things of that nature, if you ever want to call, verify the information. So option two is um, two dollars per input record, so if you have um, six thousand records, times two would be twelve thousand seventy-six, so you pay it for one, uh, one-time shot, and we would give you the information back. So, um, and then, plus if you wanted extra seats, you're looking at about eighteen thousand, so that's the first year, you're once and done, so it's, you know, and complimentary training would come with that as well. But, um, the best plan, I think, is since this is an ongoing project, and, and people change, get married, they get divorced, so your target's constantly moving, uh, thirty-six months would probably be the best situation, I think. And as far as most budgets, I think it would be much applicable there. Next slide, please. So this is the um, amount that we're projecting the next three years, is three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And then, the rate of return, what I've done is I took those two hundred and eighty-three parcels, times four-fifty, which Joyce was telling me in the beginning, that was kind of the average, of what she's looking at when they, when she finds a parcel that's uh, erroneous or out of compliance. But actually, looking and talking to her today, it's more like eight hundred, that number, that should be really eight hundred dollars. So you look, that's how I came up with the three hundred and eighty-two. So if you're looking at uh, three, three twenty-five, fifty, minus fifty, the rate of return is two seventy-five, uh, three fifty. So the two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and fifty would be the rate of return for the next three years, if you took out the expense of Luxus Mixes. So the next revenue, your new revenue would be a hundred and twenty-seven thousand uh, each year. And actually, if you took that times eight hundred, instead of four-fifty, you're looking at um, the three-year revenue of over half a million. So I think you're probably anywhere between three hundred and twenty-five thousand, all the way up to five, to a half a million there, that you can bring back. So that doesn't include the, the twenty-seven uh, folks that we had for the uh, sixty-five exemption, so we didn't include that in our calculation. So that would be additional funds that you could bring back with the over sixty-five. So I, I'm thinking, it's a, it's a very good lucrative uh, project. Um, three hundred and eighty-two thousand for the next three years is pretty substantial, because once you clean it up this year, it compounds for the next three or four years. You know, you're cleaning up that revenue, and that revenue is staying with you for the next three to five years, as long as you're owning that property. Next slide. So this is probably the end of our presentation. So I will give you some contracts and information, if you need to see the information, we can stay, hang around, and show you the, if you wanted to see the actual um, live, present, live samples that we've done. That concludes our presentation, and we're hoping that you're going to come on board with us, and let us help you out with the project.
Hey, uh, Mr. Manager. This, we, it appears that we need to do something. Losing a lot of revenue.
Yes, sir, uh, if they have contracts, and if y'all want to see that information, we can get it, have the attorney do it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we need. We'll get your contracts, and we'll, for our manager, and uh, we'll uh-
They're, they're in email form, so I can send them to them.
Okay.
That's how we-
So, yeah, we'll get what our tax board. It's obvious we got some flaws. Tax Commissioner, where you at? How you feel about this?
Actually, I'm glad you asked.
We, we, we probably can lower the mileage.
We don't-
We get the right amount.
I'm going to be honest with you, their numbers are actually too low. And the reason being is, with the law, when you get your homestead, and I just want to use a round number. Say, your homestead is, you pay eight hundred dollars, but your real taxes must be a thousand. You got to pay back two hundred dollars, plus you got to pay a thousand dollar penalty. And that goes back all, all the years back, that they claim it. Now, if it's fraudulent, they can go back as far as they want, I mean, all the way back, not just in the nineties. If it's just normal, it's, it goes back three to seven years. So that number's actually low. We had two last year. It's just two of, just two of them, I recall, it's seventy-two thousand dollars we got back. That's the taxes that they didn't pay, plus the penalty. That's just two. So that's actually a low number.
So you recommend this?
I highly recommend this.
Really, it's fair, it's fair to all the taxpayers of Waycross and Ware County.
Yeah, most of it, most of it.
If everybody pays what you're supposed to pay, then we can lower the mileage.
And the big, the biggest thing is, it's like when they said that he was leaving Duval. Duval called us last year, and actually, I got something in front of me this past year, but it was on a property that, but there was nothing we could levy on, because they had already sold it. But um, there's several uh, counties in Florida that contacted us. Uh, we had one from Clayton County, um, a couple of them from Georgia. But majority of them come out of Florida. That we've, that we've seen and actually had reported, called, cannot do, it's, it's all having to do with, it's got to be their program, because we even, Joyce and I even discussed, we don't know how they have enough time to go back and be able to find that, as far as the offices are concerned. But I'm telling you, it was a lot of money. A lot of money.
There was one, there was one county in Florida, Sarasota, we had two hundred, it was, they were fined two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So naturally, they contested that, obviously. So it was held in court for probably, maybe six to eight months, but they ended up paying, I'd say it was-
Well, this, the law is, they have to pay the difference, and the penalty is, um, the, the tax, taxes otherwise paid, and that, that's how it's for you.
Now, Florida's a little different, they can go back ten years to find someone, right? I think they'll, they'll max there, just because they knew they were going to have to track it back. They did collect it, and it was each front property, and obviously, it wasn't like ten years, but they did get the fair share of two hundred and eighty thousand, which, obviously, you know, you have two hundred and eighty thousand sitting around somewhere, because uh, someone was scamming the system, obviously, we need to pay attention to that.
Right, and I'll understand, I mean, it's, it's not like you're going out there, you're thinking, you're finding the people who's uh, signed, but, and some of them do it by accident, but they still haven't paid the difference yet. But um, I just note those two, just probably talking about it, it's plus seventy thousand dollars. And that was, that was only going back six years, I think, on these, nine or six, one or seven. But I, I recommend, I'll do that.
Thanks, Charlie, I appreciate you. Alright, well, thank you, guys, for coming, and-
We appreciate it, we had a very nice time.
Get the info to the, to our manager, he'll get it, our attorney for review. Alright, let's get into the next item, be, Mr. Manager.
And uh, under tab B is a request for an appointment to the South, Southern Georgia Regional Commission, uh, Board of Directors, with the resignation of Commissioner Carlos Nelson, he represents Ware County on that floor. So this is a, um, appointment by the commission.
So we need to appoint somebody. Or something that has to do today, or?
Uh, it has to be, from what I understand, it does have to be a commissioner, I believe.
Oh, it has to be a commissioner, so? Where can we table?
We already have a, I think it was Citizen on that, so.
Can we table, to the next meeting, where, where it's first, like, like? Yeah. Put, we put our, you, Commissioner, right before. That's why you take care of that. Okay, alright, let's, let's table that, item to the next meeting, item C, Mr. Manager.
Okay, uh, under tab C is a request to approve a change order to an existing contract uh, for resurfacing, uh, Johnny Mentry, rather, or part of the case of vote, as some folks call it, there at the uh, Ware County, Pierce County, uh, board. And uh, the, the amount, the amount I have in the packet, uh, was a little over, it's nineteen thousand dollars or more. Uh, to resurface that, I believe it was uh, a little over point seven uh, miles, and it comes to one eighty-six, six, six, three, two, one. So we have an existing contract, uh, nailed, and the amount is one million, three hundred fifty thousand, eighty-one dollars. And I'm seeing, let's just add that, since there will be that area.
If we form a contract, can we do it east coast?
Yes, sir.
I need to remind everybody, this was loss tax. Can we uh, handle that all right, in our?
Yes, sir, I'll have it on the agenda for real.
Good, Commissioner, is y'all okay with that change order?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Manager, place it up there. Alright, item D.
Okay, under tab D, um, is a request to purchase uh, equipment for the Recreation Department. We had this on the agenda, the last, uh, last meeting, and uh, Mr. Barry Cox went through and evaluated this, plus got uh, two more quotes from local vendors, and he's recommended that we- plus got, uh, two more quotes from local vendors and he's recommended that we go with the, uh, the company and the banking model and what we proposed before, which was the Hustler, uh, mower and also the, uh, the utility vehicle.
Commissioner, y'all want to ask our director, me and Wes to do that? We'd like it.
I think the base name is Mitch Cox, who's in charge of maintaining this equipment.
There, y'all come up here.
So you're good with this bid?
Good with, we got it.
This you have to maintain?
We checked into it, see where we could get parts from and we could get parts close by. We also checked in what we're going to get rid of, the old stuff, uh, this is a good bit of money too, so...
You also received a bid from two local vendors?
We got price from two local vendors and, and they actually couldn't supply us everything. And I, that's one reason I want to do this, where we keep everything in one brand, so...
That's a good idea. Any more questions, Commissioner? Is this that one county in Maydah?
Maydah and they got a, uh, dealer in Blackshear.
So they'll have, so they'll make a contract out of here, it's got five hundred dollars free.
Okay, that, that's for the equipment where it will actually come from the factory to us. We actually purchasing it, purchasing it from the factory, but the dealer in Maydah will get the credit for, for selling it and they'll be the one responsible for warranty work and all that.
Why should we be dealing with freight?
That's because it's in their contract?
It's on state contract, yes. I guess to answer your question, um, they bring it all at one time and they're probably bringing it on a big truck and they bring everything at one time, so I guess that's...
Any more questions?
I'd like to see when we ask these bids, that we do pass it, it'd be FOB, WICOR. Let them worry about freight. Ain't much money, but there again, I think that's impressive.
Ray, I got another question. These law boards have got pictures of these right here, they still operational?
They still run, but the frame hold out on them.
Why are they kept up there than this right here?
Well, they, they got a lot of hours on them, like, you know, I, I don't really know about their treatment out there. I'm sure they, like everybody else, they get a lot of rough treatment, but, um, they could, they actually got a lot of hours on them though, so... Just, it's not all the treatment, it's, they just wore out, you know?
I want to ask our director, how many acres of recreation? I'm, I'm talking about all, we got all the recreation system. Tell me, if you, if you can give us a rundown.
I still don't know the true footprint of the Bay, when you add in Bailey and you add in Memorial Park, I don't exactly what that is, but it's, uh...
But if y'all may take Bailey, all of that, so...
Yeah, Bailey, Memorial Park, yeah.
All right, watch y'all's pleasure, Commissioner. This equipment, is it, when it's not a use, is it on there a shelter?
Yeah, we have a garage, cover garage at the...
Oh, right, that's thing, yeah, legal, look like we're... It's probably didn't start with, whether it, it's used, they want shields, they have, they've got an ice shelter on them.
They've knocked in there probably three, four years ago. And I think they're more of what, probably twenty, twenty-five years old.
Uh, I think about eighteen.
Eighteen.
This board is eighteen years old? Commissioner, y'all okay? Place it on the agenda, Commissioner. Next item, item E.
Okay, under tab E is Resolution twenty twenty dash zero six, uh, as for the U.S. Constitution, Second Amendment support. Commissioner Martin asked, I'll place this on the agenda for discussion, consideration. The original resolution is, is in your packet, there behind the cover sheet and also a, um, a declaration, if you will, a resolution by Sheriff Randy Roy that I've attached to the back of it.
I'll throw it to you after.
No, sir, it was left out. The one that was modified by the county attorneys, I think they've been using other parts of the state of Georgia, urban South Georgia.
Now, the reason I wanted to put it on the meeting tonight, lots of my, things in my district are requesting this. And I thought the sheriff, he come on board with it also. And he wrote us a letter with this on the resolution, give his blessing on it. I'd like to see it getting put on and passed tonight. This doesn't have anything to do with, uh, the Second Amendment changing. Of course, you can't change that, no, that's, Second Amendment is a second amendment. Am I right, Madam Attorney? Can't change the Second Amendment.
No, sir, that's part of the Constitution.
Yeah, I know. I'm not sure, see a hands of everybody, hands of a member of the NRA, raise your hand. I'm a lifetime member.
Me too.
Me too. Do we say it one more? I'm for whatever, whatever, uh, the condition will, it's out of support. Commissioner, y'all want to on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Place it on the agenda. All right. Item F.
Okay, under tab F is a request to appoint someone to post seven on the White Cross River County Planning Commission. Uh, post seven is vacated by Mr. John Stevens and this is a term that lasts through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And I'll, uh, Mr. Schubert's in here or not, he might be able to speak to this, but we need to, uh, to appoint someone to that board from the planning department.
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Angela Strickland on Costas Way Realty. She's, I talked to her, she's ready, willing and able to serve and would be a good member.
Angela Strickland?
Angela Strickland.
Angela Strickland.
Talked to, uh, Mr. Schubert, needs good...
Oh, okay. You okay with that? Come up. Mr. Director, I can't believe you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we don't currently have a realtor on that board and they're very helpful.
Yeah.
On that board, escape other realtors, give us...
Commissioner, y'all okay? Place it on the agenda. Item G.
Okay, under tab, under tab G is a request to purchase two pickup truck, uh, that we have that, uh, off-contract and we have two that were surplus. There are pictures in your packet, your hard copies, it wasn't sent to you in the email, but you can see the two older vehicles, they're ninety-fours. Uh, I think one's got three hundred and ten thousand miles, another one maybe three twenty or something like that, I think. So this is, we'll purchase this out of the spot, the on the team's spot. And it's for a price not to exceed sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
These will probably get to the top.
Yes, sir, yes, and they'll actually be moved to, uh, to Mr. Brooks and, uh, Mr. Cox and then they'll take theirs, uh, that are still in really good shape and move those down to some of the old ones. That's the total price for the two of them.
Yes, and they'll, they'll ever here.
That's right.
You have to go get them.
We'll have to go get them, I think these are in, um, I forgot the name of the company, I don't know.
Burton?
Yeah, Burton, yeah.
That's right, outside of the... Okay, Commissioner, y'all okay with that?
All right.
Okay, Mr. Manager, place that on the agenda.
Okay.
All right, item seven, Commissioner's hours, any of you got anything you're close on time? We've got one now.
Well, I just, I wonder where we are at, uh, on ABC, the people might, could like to know. They won't be here probably in the next few...
Uh, still acquiring right-ofway? I don't know as of today if we've actually got the permit, you know?
We're expecting it within the next few weeks.
So we haven't gotten the permit from the board yet and we're also having to purchase right-ofway, they're all things.
Has letters been sent out to the cross field?
Yes, sir.
I've talked to several, I've, they have talked to several, they kind of noticed me, but...
All right, you know, can you give me the names? Okay.
He's actually, he's still with the, uh, title, the ash tractor. After, uh, they go back and search back all the titles of the current property owner, then the letters will go out. And I don't think the, the title's been cleared yet.
And it's the Army Corps Engineers, has to give us a really high...
Actually, it's CSX because it's within their right-ofway, so we actually...
The Corps don't have any, they don't have any, I hope we've made that sixty-eight thousand, or seventy-eight thousand, about, what was that?
Corps Engineers?
Yeah, Corps Engineers.
Yeah.
We received those permits?
Well, we paid for it, we haven't received the permits, so that's what's...
So the Corps of Engineers got the physical permit in your hand before you were formed.
That's right.
So CSX has already cleared everything now?
Uh, I think they had some, uh, modifications, some revisions they wanted to make just recently, within the last few days. Uh, Brandon might be able to speak to that on some of the things they wanted to clear up with, uh, our engineer on that.
Thank you, Chairman. The consultant was notified by CSX that, uh, there were a few items they wanted to see revised or the drawings and he's in the process of doing those, uh, there weren't very many items. Um, and then we expect the, uh, permit and the Corps of Engineers within the next few weeks. Um, the consultant expected to be back within thirty days and that was about two weeks ago. So we should be getting that any day now. And, uh, the, uh, title work, uh, they're going back through there, making sure that the titles of the property owners we have are all current and then start sending those letters out to those property owners. Um, the county attorney's office told me last week they're expecting to get that back from the ash tractor within a couple of weeks. So we'll start the whole process of the right-ofway acquisition and easements and acquisitions that are required for the project.
This, that, that permit, does it include crossing those two, Gallow Creek and the one back up that, uh...
This for both, both parts, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. How, how, what, what's the projected date, uh, Brandon, that we see some dirt turned over out there?
It's hard to know, um, because it, the, the acquisition of the property takes so long. Um, with Cypress Street, we, um, it's actually taking about a year to acquire all the right-ofway for Cypress Street. Um, I hope that it won't take as long this time. Um, we're going to try to do some things differently to speed the process up as much as we can. Um, but it's, uh, very, uh...
It's time to, it's time to wait in period, we want to send it over.
Well, I mean, we're going to proceed and get the right-ofway regardless of all these permits and things. We can do that, get it ready. And then, uh, if we try to negotiate for the right-ofway and we don't or can't for some reason, we can always go to the judge and get a right of entry and let's get the job going. Uh, they, we, we're not, we're not supplying quick enough those people out there. I talk to some of them every week and they want to know when.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
There's a lot of preliminary work that goes in, uh, before you actually start construction. Uh, construction's probably going to be the, the shortest time period, the acquisition and the permit is the, is the key. So that's why it just takes so much longer.
Most of the road is in, uh, Commissioner Barnes', uh, district and then some of it's in my district. But I'd like for us to be sure that we keep pursuing this thing, I mean, just as fast as we can do it. Because, uh, it means whether a man dies in ambulance or don't, you know? You can't get out of there. Well, what, what everybody needs to understand is they want to drive, they wait on the drive. That's right. They still across the track. That's right. But when he gets to wait on the drive, he can get to the hospital. That's right. So that's the main thing, he didn't get to a hospital.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, man. All right. Mr. Manager, you got anything?
Yes, sir, I have anything, yes.
All right, can we, Madam Attorney?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, I'm the entertaining motion adjournment for what I said.
Salute, say it.
The second, oh, please, I'm saying, I... Your adjournment for...